Why?
Well, in this building, because I think this is the last suite for which I would be necessary. I think that's true. Now, I could be wrong.
Well, I think we talked about changing the whole building. Well, we must not have done it.
Okay. We got some people joining. That's great.
Oh, sorry, I gotta get my, uh, get my video up here.
You're not at all. You're welcome, guys. Slide over here if you'd like.
I see Mardele.
Hello.
Hi, Michelle.
Right, recognize your voice and you.
Good.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi. Hi, Stefan.
Frank.
Hi, folks. Frank Boils.
Hello.
Gotta keep ours on, don't we?
Nice to almost meet you.
Yeah. Virtually meet you.
So you are the new interim?
Interim, yeah.
Okay.
I'm an interim city administrator, trying to just put things together here and make sure that we go through a process that gets the city of Maple Plain, the best possible city administrator they can possibly get. And then there's a whole variety of things. We're just kind of trying to patch up, you know, whenever, whenever you have a period of instability, a lot of things get left by the wayside, by the nature of the thing. And so there's an awful lot of things we're trying to get completed now. And I'm starting, I can feel the wheel starting to move in the right direction.
Good.
Yeah.
Well, it must be hard to kind of just jump in and try to get up to speed in such a short period of time.
You know, I've been a manager, primarily city manager and administrator. They're different critters. I'll go into it if you want to know, but I, I have been that for forty, I think, no, not, I, well, certainly twenty-six of the years, manager, and primarily in one town. The other ones, I've been an assistant or assistant, too. And yeah, every darn one of them is totally different. And this is the, you realize how important having background and history is, because I come in here and I don't know where to find things. I'm not sure what software they're using. And I mean, you have to come up to speed. It's like changing everything else in this world.
Well, the person, the person right behind you, you can use, you can lean on her for history.
Is that right?
Yes.
She seemed to know an awful lot. We were talking about this variance and she started telling me about what the history is there. Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I, I've got some questions and I think Mardele probably might have the same thing. I'm, I'm a little surprised we're revisiting this, but that's okay. So it's always, it's always interesting. You've, you've got a lot to, they've changed buildings, they've gone through several administrators and staff. So yeah, trying to find things, I imagine, is a little difficult at times. Caitlin. You're muted.
There we are. Hello. How are you?
Good. You?
I'm doing well.
That's good.
I'm campaigning.
As good as it can be in a pandemic. It's a little different this year, not being able to doorknock. I miss that.
Yeah.
Well, I've been seeing your name out there a lot.
Yes.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Especially since we had about half our signs stolen this weekend, so.
This weekend again?
Oh, yeah, just we, and today I got a call that like three of my big ones were taken. So in the middle of the day, they don't know by whom. They just up and disappeared.
I.
Well, I think we knew by who.
Yeah. Virtually not enough to prosecute, but.
No.
Yeah. You should put those little Go, are they called GoPros or whatever?
Oh, yeah.
The others are that, like, maybe they'd even take you to there where they're stashing them. I mean, shame on people for crying out loud.
I know. Can't we all just get along?
Yes. Oh, it's a mark.
That sounds, that sounds like a good platform.
Yes.
Who are you running against?
Representative Hertas. He's been our rep, I think, about eight years. And as I like to say, if you don't know who it is, he's probably not doing his job.
I think you're right.
I know who he is. I'm not sure all these positions.
Yep.
And this is Dave Austin from Farmers Insurance. Now I can select, evidently talk and hopefully be seen and heard, because I've attempted to connect in twice.
Oh, and you are being seen and heard.
Nice.
Yeah. Barb, you're, you're just being heard today?
I'm not trying that way.
Okay.
I've moved everyone to a panelist position, which means they can both be seen and heard. I show no attendees. Attendees are the folks who can't be seen unless you're calling in on a phone line. That's a possibility.
Yeah, that must be Barb, although she's got it on mute again. Has anyone heard from Barbara?
No.
Okay.
Ah, Barbara, there's another Barbara.
Barbara. No, I keep doing it. I keep doing it, kids.
Barbara, if you want to be seen, the lower left, it says, stop video or something about video with a little, probably a little cross through it.
Thank you, Stefan.
I'm, yeah. There we go.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're in the sunshine, or kinda.
I am.
Good, good, good.
We need every last drop of that sunshine now.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Stuck inside.
Yes, yes, yes.
Caitlin, thank you for putting the sign in my yard. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you for hosting one. I appreciate your support.
Mark, are you out there somewhere?
I am.
I don't know why I'm not seeing you.
I can see you.
There you go.
Yep, there he is.
Now, is this, is this meeting recorded?
It says it's been recorded, yeah.
It does, but should I be recording it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You should.
Is, um.
Because it's supposed to be a public hearing, so it has to be recorded. Well, all our meetings are recorded.
Yeah.
Very good.
But usually we don't start until we start the meeting.
Well.
Yeah.
We, we can edit video.
I was gonna say, let's trim that first part off.
No, don't say that. Should we, let's see, we're at about six oh five-ish? Should we hold for a minute to see if Barbara gets on or start?
I think we've got a quorum, so we should be good.
Good. Okay. Um, well, we can, we can start then. We'll start the October 1st planning commission meeting via Zoom. And I have, so I've called it to order. On the agenda, I have just a couple of questions or I call them kind of housekeeping things. So I wanted to know, I want to add that to the agenda. And is that in the number four commission report and other business area or?
I think that'd be the right spot.
Okay. So then we don't need to add anything in?
I also have something that wants to be added at that time, too.
Okay. And anybody else who has something? So, okay, so for sure, we know the two of us. All right. Um, okay. So, since we don't have to officially change the agenda, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion to adopt it.
I'll second.
Okay. Now, Frank, can we just all say yea or nay, or do you need to like write down each individual person?
You know, one of the things the city council has done effectively is when they vote, they raise their hand and then the chair looks across to see who's got their hand up for a or nay.
Okay. All right. So it's been first and second. And so all those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye and, and/or raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Frank, are you seeing everybody?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then please note that Barbara is not here. Okay. So then with new business, and I know, let's see, if he's still there, let me see.
Hello, I'm sorry.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, Mike.
Hello.
Okay, Dave, yeah, Dave is still here. Okay. So the new business is the Farmers Insurance wanting to have a variance to permit a sign on their building. And how we usually done this is there's some information that comes from staff. So I'm taking that that would probably be Mark and, and/or Frank. And we'll hear that. And then I'll open the public hearing and somebody help me remember to close it, because you know, I have a hard time with that. And then the commission will talk and with questions that we might have with for you, Dave, and, and we'll kind of go from there. So go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. The item on the agenda tonight is a request for a variance to permit a, an intern internally illuminated sign. That would be a wall mounted sign on the building that's located at fifty-one fifty-nine Main Street East. Farmers Insurance and David Austin, who runs this particular branch of that, has requested that the city consider granting a variance to allow that internally illuminated sign to be located on the building. Building itself, fifty-one fifty-nine Main Street East, is zoned mixed use downtown or M U D. It's guided by the city's comprehensive plan as mixed use and it's approximately point three six acres in size. The building itself is a multi-tenant building. And typically, when multi-tenant buildings are constructed, the city would require the building to have a comprehensive sign package that would be approved, that would stipulate approved locations, square footages, sign materials, sign lighting, and similar types of criteria for all of the tenant spaces located within the building. And then as that building changes tenants, those, those signs would then be just swapped out and they could come through the city without needing any kind of supplemental approval unless they weren't to comply with those standards. This particular building was built without a master plan or a master sign package being approved. And that is likely just when it was built, that wasn't a requirement of the city. So the city has historically now reviewed this particular building individually on a kind of case by case basis, and has considered similar variances for this building historically. The reason the applicants in front of the city tonight is the city has guidelines that are referenced in the city ordinances and govern the types of signs that can be installed within the downtown mixed use districts. And that's all three of the subzones within the mixed use. This being the downtown, the mixed use downtown, it has certain provisions that are permitted. The, the provision that we're talking about tonight revolves around an internal illumination of a sign. And so that is having a lighting source that's located within the frame of the sign and then typically trans, typically projecting through a translucent material to light up that sign. The city's guidelines for the downtown district clearly stipulate that internal lighting is not acceptable and prohibits essentially then all internal illumination within any sign that's located within the downtown district. So this particular sign that's being proposed by the applicant is a sign that would be for a space that doesn't currently have a tenant in it and would be swapped out. And the internal illumination of this particular sign would require the city to grant a variance from the sign provisions, allowing that internal illumination versus either being exterior lit from the outside or having exterior illumination, or what we call a backlit or a halo lit sign, which is something that would be lit from the backside of the lettering and not from within the lettering itself. There is some history to this particular sign. The applicant had approached the city earlier in the year and worked with, at that point, the city administrator relating to the sign and believed that they had permission to go ahead and put up a sign as long as it wasn't essentially plugged in or, or lit up. And the, the applicant went ahead and had the sign installed on the space. So if you went and looked at the building, this sign is currently on the building in place. The city and the applicant had some more correspondence in late summer of this year, and it was discussed that the sign had not been permitted by the city or officially permitted. There is no approval for the signage. That was kind of a written approval of the application and that the internal illumination for this sign would have to be granted a variance for, prior to being able to be illuminated if the, if the city chooses to grant that. I did also have some additional conversation with the building owner in this particular case, talking about the fact that I think in the planning, the planning commission has actually noted in the past that if we were to not grant additional variances, at some point, we'd have a fully compliant building rather than continuing to memorialize variances for this particular building. We have discussed in the past, though, and granted variances for businesses in the past on this building, noting that the majority of the existing signs on the building are all internally illuminated. And so therefore, from a conformance standpoint and kind of keeping with the character of the building and the other signs, that we, we would allow then a variance to now permit a, another internally illuminated sign. In talking to the owner of the building a little bit more, he individually doesn't have a problem with the sign ordinance that's in place. And I talked to him about the idea that he, he might need to be a part of notifying tenants as they are thinking about leasing space, that future signage would need to be compliant with city code and that the city should really probably at some point either decide to enforce the ordinance that's in place or change the ordinance. I think we've had some discussion about changing the ordinance in the past, but my general sense from that kind of unofficial discussion was, we like the, the idea behind the design guidelines that have already been adopted. There's a lot of thought put into those. And at some point, that would enhance the aesthetic of the, of the city's mixed use districts. And just to, just to kind of remember what we were talking about in that design guideline, the examples that are provided really show kind of what we call small town lighting. So signs that are not channel lettering, not neon lighting, but have gooseneck type lights that might shine over the light and, and highlight the sign itself. They might use a mixture of, of different types of materials then that are unique to the particular business that's coming in. And they wouldn't be what I would call strip mall commercial. They would be small town, small town signs. And so the owner of that, that particular building agrees with that. I think in, in concept, I don't want to speak for him, but rather than him coming forward with kind of a master variance for the whole building, which we had talked about, I think there's some concern about that. And if we were to consider this particular sign and variance for this particular sign, I would recommend that the planning commission and then ultimately council either note and/or send notification to the owner stating that they'd like to see future signs be compliant with applicable ordinances, so that as we change out tenants, those tenants know upfront that they should be trying to comply. I will note, I don't have the, I don't believe this, well, I know the sign company's not online. I've had lots of conversations with sign companies over the, the years. It's just not typical that they backlit or halo lit a sign, and it's not as cheap to do as an internally illuminated sign. But as you recall, many of you were on the commission through many of these years that we've looked at different signs. The Liquor Depot is a business that we had come in. They really wanted to have that look of an internally illuminated sign, but they were able to comply with the sign ordinance by doing what would be considered a halo or backlit sign. And I, I don't think anybody's had an issue with their sign doing that. I will tell you that the most recent business that we had come into the city with a sign package was the Cassia Senior Home. We just, I just recently approved that. It was a fully compliant sign. And that's a monument sign that's going to be externally illuminated, no internal illumination. It's going to have side lighting that essentially illuminates a, a stucco background with a stone base. And then just prior to that, we had the Iron Exchange come in and you'll recall seeing that sign and those materials. And that again is a gooseneck type lit, you know, external illuminated sign, which is fully compliant with our applicable standards. With that, I would just note that the variance being requested is not for the sign size or the sign lettering essentially, but it's, it's for the fact that we would internally illuminate that. If you look at my report, city allows wall signs to occupy up to fifteen percent of the total building facade upon which the sign is located, that in a multi-tenant building, we take the individual space that is, is kind of carved out on the front of the building and we calculate the fifteen percent. In this particular case, we did the calculation and the, the sign could occupy up to thirty-seven square feet of that particular facade space or that front footage. The proposed sign area for the sign that the applicant's already installed on this building is fifteen square feet. So it's, it's clearly less than that, which is permitted by the ordinance. The biggest issue with the sign that's being proposed is the internal illumination. I will note also that we have had discussions in the past relating to the type of lettering and the type of panel on internally illuminated signs. And we've had discussions that revolved around having individual channel letters versus a solid panel with lettering on it. And in this particular case, the applicant's got, proposed a sign that is the individual letters. I will just pull up, let's see. Frank, is there any way you can enable screen sharing? If you go down to the share screen button on your screen, there's a little arrow next to it and you should be able to, I can't remember if it's options or enable others to share screen, other panelists?
Okay, I'm looking.
There's a share screen in, with an arrow? Okay, no, that's sharing your screen?
Okay.
Uh, okay. Stop sharing yours, but there should be a little like side arrow right next to that button that says, allow, allow panelists to share screen?
Allow panelist?
Yeah, it should be right, right on that same button. There should be a little arrow right next to it. I believe it's like a little carrot looking arrow that's right next to it, which would allow you to click on it and then it brings up a little menu of a couple options. You can cancel share your screen, though, on that same button. You can just hit the X.
Yeah, well, I'm having trouble finding that, too.
Oh, just down at the bottom.
Kind of in the bottom middle.
It'll light up if you flip the cursor on it.
Yeah, the trouble is I'm not getting anything coming up here. I'm sorry, guys. Stop share. I'll try that one. How's that?
There you go.
We got that at least.
Or try hovering over Mark's name and see what you see.
Okay.
Or, or could you, Frank, can you make me a co-host? And I might be able to do it then. If you go to the participants, so you can see who's on the panel and then highlight my name.
Yep.
And then hit more and then hit make host.
You just made it to the most there, bud.
You did? There you go.
All right. Sorry about that, guys.
Oh, it's all right. It's all right.
You okay?
Yeah, no, no, I can, I can fix it. So I got it. Perfect. Good job. Frank, you're, you're really killing it on this technology. I gotta, I'm super impressed.
Yeah.
Okay. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
And can you see the Farmers Insurance sign?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to show you, this is the, this area here is the space on the building that they're going in. I actually tried to take another picture the other day when I was at the building and it, I don't know why it has my finger across it, so I'm not going to show that one. Um, in any case, this one shows the proposed sign that's, that's now on the building. So if you looked at the building, you'd see it. It's the individual letters with the logo panel. Those individual letters and the logo panel do have LED internal illumination in them.
And Mark?
This.
If I could just interject, oddly, the word insurance is actually not illuminated.
Those farmers.
Word insurance is just static letters that are red.
That's a good point. And, and that actually says it over on the side. The, the farmer's letters are internally, and I think, yeah, the logo's internally. If you look in the middle, that insurance letters are not illuminated.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, so, yeah, with, with that, I think the city has criteria for granting a variance that are found in the city's ordinance. The criteria for granting a variance are also spelled out in the staff report. Essentially, the fair, the city needs to find reasons or, or unique circumstances as to why the variance would be required by the applicant. The thing that we've found in the past is that this would be consistent with the other signs on the building. That is the reason for granting a variance. And that's, that's the, the finding that we would have to make if the planning commission were to make a recommendation to the council relating to the proposed sign. So with that, I also included the, that conditions. And the one condition that I included that we had, that I noted at least was that the city notify the building owner, asking them to notify future tenants that sign requirements are in place and strongly encourage. I, I don't think we can tell them that they can't make somebody apply or allow somebody to apply for a variance, but at least putting them on notice that the city would like to see that building compliant as we move forward.
Okay.
With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions relating to the report or the requested variance.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll open up the public hearing. It's six twenty-three my time, so it's open. Questions, I, you going through and saying it, I, the part that surprised me was that, you know, you're number three on the recommendations of asking the owner of the building to start telling applicants to, you know, to do, to follow our guidelines. I was a little surprised that that hadn't started, but having said that.
It, it has, it has been done. It's just not been officially.
And, and is that something that we would, you know, like have the owner come to a planning commission meeting and, you know, start, does he have questions, that kind of thing? I mean, however, you know, regardless of what we're doing tonight, having that get going so that it's a little stronger for them. I, I didn't have any particular questions about this. It looked very straightforward, very similar to the other people who have applied. I thought did a good job on the individual letters and the, I know it's not a symbol, but what, whatever your, the, the icon thing, your business icon.
Logo there, yeah.
Logo, thank you. Sorry. I thought that. Things that we've done in the past. And I'm, I'm not opposed. And I'm, I'm not opposed to doing it. In particular, because, um, you've already done the work, you know? I don't think we should ask you to undo it. Are there, um, questions or concerns from any of the other, um, commission members?
I guess the question I have, just looking at it, um, obviously it sounds like there's been an in-place ordinance for quite a long time. My question would be that if we, are we changing it across the town then, across the city?
No.
Or this is just in this case, and then we'll start hearing individual cases as we go.
It's, it is for this building, which Mark alluded to it in, in, when the building went up. It was during a period of time where the Cowboys ruled. And so they just kind of, um, created the building. We were working on all of the guidelines. And, um, so what we've managed to do for that building is to say, okay, to try to get it close to what we want for the city. That's where that internal, you know, individual letter, individual letters, um, the, the logo, all those kinds of things. And, um, and then start at some point like Mark said, and as I, how I was remembering it back at the time, around the time I think of variant, um, the variant people. Or maybe even the people before that, but I think the variant people where we said, let's start telling people. Because that building itself is kind of, um, they're all doing the same thing, so to speak. So the building looks uniform. And if we go and we start with the next applicant and say, you're going to need to do, follow the guidelines at some point as businesses go through that, it will be what we want it to be. But no, we're not changing it for the rest of the city.
Well, I, I don't really have any problem with, uh, the sign as proposed. I agree, it's consistent with the other signs and looking at the individual letters, uh, being illuminated not as opposed to a larger, excuse me, as opposed to a larger panel, which would have a much brighter and louder effect. I just wanted to mention, you know, that I, I'm still very much in support of the design guidelines, uh, for signage in the downtown area. I think the gateway area was a different zone, but, but you know, the intent behind those design guidelines was to create more of a kind of a quaint, small town, if not even artisan type of feel, you know, to, to the downtown area. And as new development comes in along, um, Main Street and, and Bud or wherever downtown area, I think it's important that we adhere to that. This building, um, is in that zone, but I think also because it faces Highway twelve, but to me it feels a little different than if it were a more of an interior, uh, development along Main Street. So, um, in my mind, that makes a little, a little bit more justification for it. So, um, you know, I'm in favor of, of this as, as proposed and I just also wanted to be on record for, you know, uh, supporting the design guidelines and keeping those valid going forward.
Yeah. Barb or, or Mardell? Okay.
I'm fine with it too. And I also want to, um, continue thinking about what the guidelines on design guidelines were, because that was a, um, is a very important part that we should not lose those thought.
Okay. Well, um, it looks like we are in, um, agreement so that we would make the recommendation to the council to, um, allow the variance so that he can, I'm assuming, um, Dave, that you just need to plug it in?
Yes, you just need to turn it on.
Okay, um, so in looking at what Mark had, um, I don't know if you, any of you have your papers in front of you. There's on page six of the listing. The, the guide or the recommendation is, um, there's four.
The public hearing first.
Oh, thank you, Mardell. Thank you, thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing at six thirty-one. Bless your heart. The proposed, let's see, number one is the proposed variance meets all applicable conditions, criteria and restrictions stated in the City of Maple Plains zoning ordinance. The applicant shall comply with any comments provided by the planning commission pertaining to the proposed signs. The city notify the building owner, asking them to notify future tenants of the sign requirements and strongly encouraging all new tenants within this building to consider signage that is fully compliant with applicable standards, which isn't your responsibility, Dave. The applicant shall pay for all costs associated with the city's review of the variance. So that's the recommendation that we would pass on to the council. So we need a, um, a motion to do that and then.
I'll make a motion to, uh, for this recommendation for approval of the signed package, uh, with these four, uh, with these four conditions.
Okay.
And I will second it.
Okay. Um, again, same thing that we did before. All those in favor, um, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Frank, did you get all of them?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So then the motion passes and, excuse me, Frank and, um, and Mark, if there's something that we can do or need to do with the owner of the building to, you know, kind of start to kind of have it in his head or be able to help him with any questions that he might have about how to go about doing this with future applicants. Then let us know that, okay?
Yeah, and I, uh, honorable chair, I think the, um, I had the conversation with the owner. I mean, we've had that conversation before. My, the reason that I included that recommendation for a, adding a condition to this approval, so we get it on record specifically.
That's good.
That I would, you know, this, this condition would then, um, cause the city on city letterhead, an official letter of the city to put them on notice so that we don't have the same dialogue again. Now, I'm not saying, we can't tell people they can't apply for a variance. Option, but I think it gives then the planning commission and city council a basis to deny future variance requests, um, based on the idea that had we denied the first one uh, in two thousand and sixteen, we would now have a building with only one non-compliant sign and three compliant signs, um, which I think was what you, you know, the planning commission had talked about that very point previously. Um, and I just think we need to have a little bit more record now. I think the owner is crystal clear on it. I thi, I think he, and I think he's good with it. I mean, he and I had this conversation. I mean, he wants to leave space, so he doesn't want, you know, to arbitrarily limit who he can leave space to because signs aren't permitted. But I think, I think he's seen enough of the different types of signs now being installed in the city that he recognizes that there are, there are options that work. Well, so.
Okay. Good. Thanks. Thanks for that. Well, and Dave, thank you. Um, so I, um, Mark or Frank, do you know when Dave would go to the council for this?
When is the next council meeting?
October twenty-sixth.
Is that, is that a Zoom meeting in the same format?
Correct.
Six P M. As well?
Seven.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Appreciate.
You're welcome.
Appreciate all your involvement and support on this.
Like that for mine. That's pretty, I like the colors.
Yeah. Yes. Well, we'll look for the sign to be plugged in.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Um, then going on to, um, the commission report and other business. The, the questions or the things that I wanted to bring up have to, have to do, and I said that it was kind of how I think of housekeeping. This is how I thought of housekeeping things where I work. I, in the past, when we were, um, going to have, um, planning commission meetings, the materials, um, and, and obviously pre-COVID, I appreciate that. But materials that needed to be read, reviewed, you know, questioned, all those kinds of things, keeping in mind all different kinds of schedules that people have. Um, always came the Friday before the next Thursday meeting. And, um, and that hasn't happened for a while. And, um, and now with the Zoom and with, um, making sure that everybody can connect. I, I wondered about Mardell and I'm happy, happy, happy to see Mardell there. Yes, yeah. And, but what I want to know is what would be realistic for city staff to present, um, an email saying that, the materials are ready. I, I appreciate that, um, people don't want to, you know, print out paper and stuff. But quite honestly, for some of the things in the past that we've had to do, I'm not printing out, you know, um, more than fifty sheets of paper trying to see or understand. I need the city to do that and deliver it to me. So if, if we asked each of the members, you know, like, do you want to only see this material online and you can print it on your own printers? Or do you want to pack it? I'd like to know that that's kind of being done. I'd like to know that we're going to get it in a timely manner. And, um, I appreciate if Friday before that Thursday is too much for the city staff, then tell us what we can do.
Members of the planning commission, uh, I'm at fault here. Uh, I'm fairly sure that Mark delivered the packet to be sent out to you. I think it was last Thursday. Unfortunately, my interpretation of receiving a packet from other days in this business is that it had been distributed. So I held on to my wonderful little packet, thinking, well, so we received it. Not so much. And so, uh, we, it wasn't until, I think it was Monday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay. My, my apologies again. That's when it was sent out because it's kind of like, oh my God, that's not what this meant. It meant we were supposed to distribute it. So my error.
Okay. Um, thank you for that. Is it, is it something that we could expect it on that Friday or, um, and then be notified? I want to do this. I, I understand that it's difficult, um, with COVID world to get everything out and, and, um, dropped off and all those kinds of things. But how can we do this so that people have time? This, this didn't require a great deal of time, but again, keeping in mind, we, we have even those of us who are retired are off doing lots of things, even in Corona land. So, um, how can we do this better?
Well, we certainly can get the materials out and Mark, I don't want to cash any checks or sign check and cash. If, if we can get the document, we, we certainly can email it out to you. I flat out just don't have the staff to be running around to various people delivering paper copies. So if, if you can say, okay, Fridays is when we're going to have it. We'll do our best to make sure you've got it Friday. So you've got the weekend to look over and then can decide on Monday, if, hey, wait a minute, I need something else. And, and there can be some orderliness to that. Mark, is that a reasonable?
Yeah, I, I mean, Fridays is always the day that I deliver the packet or try to deliver the packet to the planning. I mean, and, and you guys can appreciate that there's been some staff turnover.
Yeah, I know.
Unfortunately, and so there's never been a steady, I think a steady process in terms of when.
Yeah.
I, I know that, uh, and, and if you would let the city know if you want paper or digital is fine, I think that would be helpful too for the city to know because, um, I, I don't know. I mean, when, when I sent it over this week, I was not sure or last week, I mean, I wasn't sure who got paper or digital because I done, I didn't, I never have dealt with that. It always was.
I, I think that, um, there were two messages. One came from Frank and one came from Sharon.
Erin.
Sharon. And she had asked if we wanted paper. So, um, I'd be willing if it was that we knew that something would come electronically with an attachment on Friday proceeding so that we could see how large something is. And if it was something where we needed to have it printed, having, um, being able to tell Sharon, um, that, um, I know she has dropped things off. Some of us do still get out and around and we could, you know, like pick up an envelope left, you know, in front of the door or something like that. Um, but it would give us time to be able to know how much how much is there that we have to kind of go through and, and give us time so that we're not scrambling on some of the bigger ones to, um, because that, that's too much. So.
So Chair, how many of the commissioners would like to see paper copies each time we have minutes and notes? Can we have a raise of our hands of that one, Chair?
Sure. Yep.
You okay?
Uh, that's all right. I still like having the paper and this was manageable. But, um, I remember one where, um, it was, there is no way I could have printed everything out and we don't need to see every single solitary page. But there was one that had plans, sometimes when the plans are there. All of us, no, I, I'll take this. I'll just make it me. I have aging eyes and I can't look at, you know, something on a eight by eleven piece of paper that is trying to, I don't have a magnifying glass that big. So, um, I would say that I would like to have paper each time. By considering that there might not be enough staff, I would be willing to, to say that if I, if I know that something's going to be there on Friday, I'll look and see how much information there is and then I'd be able to say yes or no and what I could do. Barb, does that work?
Yeah. In fact, I actually called Sharon and said I'd, because I had text her a message and I didn't get any response. So then I just called her and said, I'd like to have a paper copy. And Jill said, well, Sharon's bringing it over to my house. So what I wanted to know, Chair, since I am retired now. For that, and it doesn't look like I'm going away for the winter. Or that if other chair, um, members, commissioners would like a copy, I'd be willing to go to the office and pick them up and deliver them. I'm not afraid to drive unless it's glare ice. So, uh, it's, you know, all right, so I'm not coming to your house, but, um, I throw that out to the city. If they want some extra help, I'm volunteering.
Well, it used to be that, that West Hennepin Public Safety delivered. I, I didn't realize that staff had done the, the deliveries too. Uh, I've always, I always got a cop coming to my door.
I think they had, at one point in, I don't remember when that happened, they, what I had heard was that West Hennepin had just kind of finally said, we don't do that anymore. And I don't know why, and I don't know that it's even true, but, um, it's also one of those things where part of what I'm trying to get is something that's more reliable. Police officers, I know something else would take precedence over delivering our packets. But when it turned out that it was like, everything was taking precedence and we weren't getting the information that somewhere something has to work. So I think.
Totally, I'm totally fine with electronic. To me, it's more important to get it as quickly as possible. So I have time to read it rather than paper versus not. If in this rare situation where I do want to see something printed out in a larger format, if you have a big set of plans or something, then I'll, I can notify the city on that and come pick it up.
Okay. Mike, do you have any preference?
I think the chair should have her copy delivered. You're just down the street. So I tell you what, I'm, I'm happy to stop by and pick it up for you.
Yeah. So we have Barb too. Yeah. But I appreciate that. Well, let's, let's do that. We know that we're notified. And if we do want the paper, then we can say that. And Barb's volunteered, and I can come and pick it up too. It's just that I, I don't want to get it two days before and we're all sitting here trying to rush through things.
I presume, Mydell, you want paper?
Correct.
Raise your hand.
I saw your hand, Mydell. I saw it. I already wrote it down and I've already got an email sent to Sharon with the people that wanted. So I think.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. And I have one other question and, and, and it's kind of a weird one. What, whatever we, was it group, group, something that we did the last meeting on? And I wasn't on video. It wasn't Zoom. I'm wondering when I look at it, if somebody was going to just call in, is there an eight hundred number or a toll free number somewhere? It was a little spendy to, to do the phone call the last time. And keeping in mind that not everybody always has computers or, you know, all the latest things. Having a toll free phone number would be beneficial so that they're not busting the bank either. And I don't know if that's possible. I, I, I finally have everything hooked up so that I'm doing this all through my computer. So.
I believe that Zoom, I'm just looking at my meeting setup.
Because the numbers that they had were all, they looked to me, well, maybe there's one. There were a lot of telephone numbers, but I wondered if they were, I didn't see something that was just kind of automatically telling me that it was.
Yeah, I mean, I see him now. I don't see an eight hundred. I see a.
And some of those, some of those nine hundred numbers are not always.
Three oh one six six nine.
Yeah.
It does say dial a number based on your current location.
And so if, if somebody can look into that so that if, if somebody needed to do it just by phone.
Yeah, the phone works. Well, I use this, I've used this platform in a number of cities. The reason we use it is primarily because the way that we set this up, you can, that like Frank had to actually enable that, the public hearing person to come into the meeting. Otherwise, they don't have any access to share their screen and or talk. And then you have control to kick them out of the meeting as well. So it's like a webinar platform. It, it's a little bit different than just like a standard meeting platform, but.
Yeah. And, and this is worked, this worked well and stuff, but I was just wondering about if somebody can look into that. But those are my questions. I know, Barb, you had some.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I've been asked. Well, I probably, well, I can't show you, but right behind me, as we take a little walk around here, the nursing home. Okay. And so all my neighbors are asking what's happening with that?
The old one.
The old one. Yeah. Anybody know?
I can tell you what I do know. I, I mean, I don't, I don't know exactly. I do know that they, Cassie hasn't provided at least me, and I don't know, Caitlin, if you have any other insight, but I, I know I've gotten a lot of calls from Realtor about that site and what it could be reused for and if it were to sell. But I am not aware that Cassie's made an official determination on what they're doing with that site at this point. So I still think that's out there. I don't think that they've made a determination on use of that site, but.
Yeah, that's what I last heard.
Should I be getting scared yet? I guess I want to know that.
Well, the, the, the thing is.
The unknown.
You know, it could be reused for exactly what it's used for right now, but pretty much anything outside of that is likely going to require some sort of a site plan review and or potentially conditional use or some other type of permitting from the city.
Well, yeah.
So I just, I don't know. And I, I mean, I know a lot of people have asked that, and I, I really don't know that Cassian knows what exactly they're doing yet. And I think what they're trying to see is what happens when they open the building? What's their demand? Do they have access to man? Do they not? Is there anything there that would, would be a reason for them to keep that or reuse that?
Yeah.
But they can't just put anything in there. So don't be afraid because you can't just walk in and put like a McDonald's, you know? That's not allowed. It's still not allowed.
No. And well, yeah, because it's resident, it's owned residential.
It is.
So we'd have to, yeah, Mark is right. Anything would need a change. I know that a lot of people are are just interested because they don't want, you know, like a big empty building.
Or a building deteriorating, you know, going to be there for a long time.
Yeah. So.
Don't need to have. Yeah. Something that like that in the neighborhood.
Yeah. No, we don't. Is, are we ever, are we getting a, what was that? A quick?
Quick trip?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Tells you how much I pay attention to that stuff. Are we still getting one or that kind of got bombed out with COVID?
We don't know yet. They're still working on a deal. The, the issue's not with the city. It's between the landowner and QuickTrip on, on a price. That's my.
Villamil?
Yeah.
Ah, gotcha. Okay.
Okay.
Does anybody else have?
I have one more question though. Since we're talking about signage and this is one of my pet peeves and asked before.
And it's been brought up. That's okay, Barb. It's a valid point.
Been brought up and here I'm doing it again. The, you know, and part of it, the reason why I'm bringing it up tonight again is because we are discussing signage. Okay? And I was on the planning commission when we had the liquor store come into town and we okayed the signage on that. But if, I don't know how many of you have driven by for years now, I'm not just stating six months or three months or I'm saying years.
Yeah.
That sign is not correct at night when it, it gets stuck. They're missing the letters and they don't give a rip, or they haven't, they're not paying attention to it. And I just want on record again that I think, you know, signage is a big thing. We are here tonight discussing it. And I think somebody should go forward and talk to those people at the liquor place and say, get your sign up and running correctly.
Yeah.
I'll second that. Four years.
Yeah. And when I, when I was on, not on, when I was on the planning commission the last time, and I, I can't remember how long I've been on it this time, but I know that there was a problem before and I'm like, mm-mm.
Yeah. No, they, they need to put in a light bulb.
Mark, is that something that's actually enforceable by ordinance? Or do we need to add something about maintenance of the lighting?
I, I think we could probably go after it. I mean, it's kind of a blight issue. I, we probably have reason. I don't know. I know that I had talked before with, with the city about doing or set. And I think, I think Bobby had had correspondence with them on that light. I don't know if anybody looks at that building, but there's also in the neighborhood of twenty illegal temporary banner signs on the wall.
Yeah.
I don't know if they ever sees that when they look at the sign. I know I do every time I drive by count the. City had notified them of that as well, but.
Yeah.
I noticed that just before I go by collision corner and see they're not compliant as well. The same.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So, yeah.
To be honest with you guys, to be with honest with you, since I am a Maple planer, I try to keep my business in town. But, and I do not buy a lot of liquor because I, that's not something that I do, but every once in a while I will get a bottle of wine. And but because they're not compliant, I won't buy my stuff there. I will go into Long Lake and buy my bottle. Well, part of it is I was working in Long Lake too, but, um, you know, I'm not a big drinker. You know, come on, people. I know they've been told before to get it together. And then I, I feel they should have to.
To get, yeah. Yeah, I would agree.
I believe we've even fined them for the temporary signs at one point.
Yeah, I think so too, actually.
Yeah.
Liquor depot next to the bank.
Oh, okay.
That, yeah. Frank, one of the issues.
That was all that I had to bring up. Thank you for listening.
Yeah, thanks, Barb. Frank, this is one of those things that you could maybe put on your list of a million things that need to be done for the next person is enforcement of the ordinances. And how does that get done in this town? Because.
I, I mean, I will report that the city council did approve the nuisance update to the ordinance that the planning commission had committed and that was approved and that it has been now published, I believe. And so it's now in place for, for enforcement. And I, Frank probably doesn't know, but I mean, prior to the departure of the last administrator, I mean, he was being charged by the city council to enforce a number of the, the violations. And so that was part of why we went through the ordinance was to get the ordinance into a place that we could then utilize for kind of future enforcement. So I think that is or was a priority. Caitlin, you probably speak to, but there's a lot of things going on that need to.
I know. I know.
Place right now, but I think once that gets back into place and the city's back on a kind of stable platform for, you know, all of the staffing stuff, then I think that's probably a focal, focal point, Caitlin, I guess.
It was part of our goals. I mean, we must have had, you know, half a dozen meetings about enforcement alone the past year or so. So it's definitely on our radar, but it's helpful when you guys bring it up again. So don't be afraid to, because then it either reminds us or it allow, you know, gives us the backing to enforce it as well, saying it's not just council, you know, it's planning and other residents. So.
Right. Yes. Well, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. I was just gonna mention, since we're talking about signage, I'll repeat my pet project as well, too.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
And that is the, you know, the city entrance signs, I think needs some updating. Both the metal ones as well as the wood one up on nineteen heading north. Yeah, I, I don't think they shed very good light on the city. I think that would be kind of good, good change. If, I'm, I'm sure that the council has plenty of more difficult issues to deal with, but I just wanted to send that reminder out as well, too. In addition to that, I just kind of the general, you know, look and feel of the city. I know all, with all the improvements that are happening in front of Iron Exchange and, and, and the, the new senior housing. If the frontage along twelve, I'm not sure who owns that, who maintains that, but that's always been an eyesore. I noticed that when they did the parking lot, they put in a new rain garden. But that's, but, but yet they didn't incorporate the ditch of the highways. It's sort of like, there's sort of two depressions there. One is totally unmaintained and full of cattails. The other one is the nice new rain garden. So if this, if it could be something done, maybe it's already in the plans and not done yet. I don't know, but something to kind of clean up the frontage along twelve, I think that would be a good facelift for, for the city.
Yeah. They did cut down some of the weeds by Moniz and this, and the metal sign. I did notice that. And I wanted to say that the I, I apologize. I still call it Northside Park.
Veterans Memorial.
Veterans Memorial. Thank you. That's, that's looking, starting to look very nice. And to see some of the new things coming in there. So that, that's seems to be coming along well.
I can tell you that the city council does have a high priority with respect to some of these ordinance enforcement. One of the problems is they seem to be innumerable. For example, I had to do was contact the state of Minnesota and ask them when they would be coming through on their twice annual mowing of their right of way. That's all they take responsibility for mowing is the right of way. And if you get into anything that looks like a rain garden, they stay away from it. Not surprisingly. We did the same thing with Hennepin County. They told me that they had one of their three mowers for this area broke down. So you got three mowers, really? County rights of way. We did finally get out here with a little bit of our harassment. Similarly, private property with long grass or road rights of way areas with concrete. Own property, the old, old city hall, we've been running after some things, trying to get those better maintained, perfect, hardly. But in stepping in the right direction. Talked to Moniz, I've talked to Villamil, I've talked to the new folks at Haven. What is it? Haven Homes. And for the most part cooperative, and we certainly appreciate that.
Good. That's good to hear. That's good to hear. Anybody else have any questions or opinions? Well, then I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to say goodbye to tonight's meeting and goodbye to everybody and see you next month at the next meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I would second that.
Okay. All those in favor? I, raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye. And Mydell, yep, we got it. Thank you. Thank you, Frank.
Take care, everybody.
Nice to meet you all.
Good luck, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We say goodbye. Goodbye.